Good evening. Today is Tuesday. It is October 1st, and this is a regular meeting of the City Council for the City of Trinidad. Will you make sure that your cellphones are muted and your caps are off? And we will stand for at least five minutes.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Item number one on the agenda is roll call.
Debona?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Trinhel?
Here.
Ogletree?
Williamson?
Here.
Creago?
Here.
This Ogletree called me this afternoon, or she sent me a text. She is stranded in the Carolinas without power, so she will not even be able to attend virtually. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have corrections or changes to the agenda? May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Sub moved.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Trinhel?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes.
Item number three, policy items and staff reports. Assume there are none.
None of this, this idea, thank you.
Okay. Item four, petitions or communications, oral or written. Please be advised that each person who speaks is limited to five minutes. Mr. Downs is our official timekeeper, and he will queue you when there's one minute left, so you will have the opportunity to conclude your speech. I'm seeing there's a lot of people that are speaking, so please make sure you adhere to the five-minute time limitation. If there are any discussions within the audience, please make it so it's not interrupting or disturbing the proceedings of the council meeting. I have, I'm gonna read one communication that we got in our packet. It's a written communication before we start the oral. It's from Jen Green, and it said, it's addressed to Audra Garrett. "Please accept this letter of resignation from my position as member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board in the City of Trinidad. It has been a pleasure serving, and I look forward to new opportunities to support outdoor recreation in Trinidad. With appreciation, Jen Green." So the first speaker is Mr. Yocum, and he wants to speak on the pickleball court.
Totally short-strawed this again, so if I had a video of the last time I was here, I would read it for you. I have a few fun facts that I'm gonna share with you that I just got off the internet, which everybody knows is completely true. The Earth is Flat was the first thing I read. I had no idea about, I'm sorry, the reason I mention that is that we can take all these with a grain of salt. But for tonight, we can pretend like it's our joint reality. Every month, on average, between 2023 and up to now, whenever they stopped doing this, there was 130 new locations built with pickleball, averaging about 1,000 pickleball courts each month. It's a thing. It's a real thing. This, I found shocking, the largest age bracket right now playing pickleball is between 18 and 34. So that dispels the myth that it's a bunch of tennis players that are washed up, that have replaced every joint from their waist down, and that's all they're doing. So it has broad appeal, let's say the least. In America alone, there's 36 and a half million people playing currently. That's 14% of the adult population. Doesn't count children under the age of 18, which I'm assuming there's a panload of those too. Between 2017 and 2022, there was an 85% increase in people playing the sport. So I'm guessing within the next month, I'll see you guys on the court at the rate that it's increasing. This one's a sad one. There are communities much smaller than Trinidad that had put in six plexes or more. It's, it's that important to their community. And I, I think we're kind of behind the eight ball, and we've been kind of fighting this for a couple of years now. But hopefully, it's gonna turn around. One last thing. There's this old adage, and that's not true because I made this up. If you're on a wave runner and you're not smiling, you're broken on the inside. And the same thing is true with pickleball. If you're playing pickleball, it's a super fun sport, and it applies to everybody, including paraplegics. Anybody can play it regardless of age, regardless of athletic, you know, prowess, et cetera. There's that preamble. Now I'm gonna ask a bunch of questions that no one's gonna answer, but hopefully, it will plant the seed that when you have your work session, you can maybe think about some of these. I was told, this is like eighth hand now probably, there was 354,000 allocated for these courts, some of which was spent investigating the high school and the viability of building the courts up to the high school, which was kind of sketch apparently in terms of water. So I'm guessing most of it is, is still remaining, the 354. There's a company called Renner, which is a source well contractor, didn't have to have a, what's the acronym? Request or Proposal, RFP. Yeah, so didn't you have to write one up? They could just do it. They were under 300 for the construction with the caveat that the City of Trinidad would do some of the preliminary site work. They'd move the utilities, they'd do some of the engineering, et cetera. So that, that was a $354,000 buffer that would have fallen on to Trinidad. Again, I have no idea if that was sufficient. Maybe it was, maybe it wasn't. As I'm rambling on here, the price of everything is going up, and I hate to see this thing go into 2025 because it's gonna become more expensive, just like an F-15 is gonna become more expensive. And I would love for us to get somebody under contract. Jared?
Is Jared here?
Jared's not here.
One minute, sir. Sorry.
Oh, and I'll, I'll talk even faster. So Jared, Jared's got this horse and cart thing going, at least from what I've been told, but he doesn't wanna put out this thing for contract, for bid rather, because he doesn't know where it's gonna be or how much it's gonna cost, and he doesn't wanna do it because it doesn't wanna waste anybody's time. But if we don't know what it's gonna cost, then it just seems like we're chasing our tail on this. Like, let's get some bids. And especially if these are source well people, let's get some bids. You don't even have to give them any paperwork, just say we want six courts. Jared? Nine or a minute?
You are, you're in 27 seconds.
Oh, my God, what am I gonna say? I still like the fact that it's in proximity to the Riverwalk. I think that that's a giant plus. That the tennis court, excuse me, the basketball courts down there were not used, to my knowledge, for the six years I've been here, and now they are used day in and day out by pickleball people. That little playground that no one ever uses needs to be cut down. That would also be a safer environment for kids to play in. I just think it's a plus for everybody to have it down by Los Ninos.
Thank you, you did.
Thank you very much for your time.
Jim Resetti, back to projects.
Evening, council. Brought me a Snicker. I was told by a councilman that I should eat one before it comes, so I wouldn't be such a bee then. So I watched the last council meeting and was a little disgusted with it, but it came up that people, I wrote something on social media, said they ought to know the facts before it's published, or put it on social media. I don't believe I didn't put anything on there that wasn't a fact. I did use my name. I wasn't anonymous. I wasn't hiding nothing. I said I wasn't gonna be at the meeting. All I said was, you are gonna discuss a $400,000 match for the George Stetson Trail System. And when I watched the meeting, it looked like most of the council didn't even realize that was happening anyway. Ms. Ogletree said she didn't know. Aaron said he had to go back and watch the meeting. There's only one person that seemed interested in it, and that was our mayor about, you know, bringing people up to our state land that, you know, we have 4,000 tourists coming in, bike riding and walking, walking trails. But like I said, I don't believe anything I put on social media was, was not a fact. And as far as projects go, I was gonna bring up pickleball as one of them, but my pet pee, Central Park, August 17th was their final date. They're now right at 34,000 in liquidated damages to the city. I don't know if the city's gonna charge that or turn the other cheek like they usually do. But the other deal is Friday, that project's gonna be one year in the process. Started out 150 days for 1.2 million. Swallowed over $2 million, 2.7. In the work session, there was 101.2 million used out of capital funds. Nobody said where the other million came from. That'd be kind of nice to know, so the public can know where the other million dollars came from. The other reason I posted that on social media was because of the astroturf. If you remember that project, that never went, was brought to council, never went out to bid, and was slid under your noses to bid on it or to prove the $600,000. And that night, the mayor actually asked the contractor if he could speak about what was entailed on it, and he says, that's not even part of my project, that's a whole separate project. So that project was all done underhanded, so. Another deal is, what about the skate park? People are waiting on the skate park. Mr. Shu, your lights up, Garfield. That was with the last city manager, so we got an intern right now. You might remind him, even though he started this project when he was city manager. Another one is, there's one more. Drainage out at Public Works Building. Public Works Director said that's in design. That's been in design for seven years. It's been done. Reason it's not been done, it's gonna be right at a million dollars to do. City don't have a million bucks to do it. Yet, city's water is going into the neighbor's basement, flooding their house. The storm drains inside the building going out the north wall into an open ditch. All the gas, oil, antifreeze, whatever that falls there, is going straight out into the, into the property, so.
One minute.
Everybody at City Hall knows about this, they've known about it, and nobody does anything. So that's all I really have to say. I'll sit down and eat my Snicker.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tim Peters wants to talk about public safety.
How you guys, how have you been? Tim Peters. I'd like to specifically talk about Santa Fe Trail Drive from Saddle Road up to the Holiday Inn, okay? From Main Street up to Saddle Road, there's plenty of sidewalk, there's plenty of space, there's walking areas, there's biking areas, there's lighting. You get right by Saddle Road. It goes to absolutely no pedestrian right of way. I mean, you have, you have 16 inches, and then you're walking into the road, okay? You can't get, you can't walk down it safely, you can't ride your bike safely, you could not do a wheelchair safely. This is on both sides of the road, so it's not like, well, you could cross over. Both sides of the roads are like this. I ride my bike a lot now, and I ride up to Fisher's Peak, right? So I take off Saddle Road, and I go up there. I can get to the top of Fisher's Peak safer than I can get through that stretch of road when there's cars coming. If Dave and his boys come up behind me and I'm on the right-hand side of the road, I'm squished. You cannot walk it. There's no lighting there. I don't, I don't understand. It's like Santa Fe Trail came up and then everything stopped. We're looking at across town, every sidewalk's got a handicap, ADA, ramp, something going on. We're trying to comply with that. We're talking about things on Main Street. Why, why isn't that included in the conversations? Somebody's gonna get killed though. No lighting, no reason, you know, you can't walk it. It's dangerous, okay? I would have brought a bunch of pictures, but I know you don't look at them, and we all drive it. Next time you drive it, and keep your eyes open. It's serious. Otherwise, I would've stayed home and done whatever I wanted to do, no. But somebody's gonna get hurt. So that's all, that's all I got. Thank you.
James Neistrom wants to talk about state line miniatures.
Thank you very much for listening to us. Hopefully, on a sure note, I have gifts for everybody. Take a look back at you. We are state line miniatures. We are born out of a exhibit for the Smithsonian Traveling Exhibit to change rural America. Do you care for one, Bill?
Please.
Thank you. Any more for the American?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. You. Okay. We were contacted by Ken Chafin when the Smithsonian exhibit went through to be a companion exhibit. We started an exhibit for trains, which was a big part of Trinidad's, Trinidad and the whole area's development. Not being, we got real trains in the space, we ended up with toy trains. Currently, we have three different gauges of trains running. We have two more for visual comparison. We have a toy wind train for kids to play with and such. When the Smithsonian exhibit went off on the first weekend of January, we were given the opportunity to stay in the place of the word because it hadn't been rented, and we were very popular with a lot of people. A lot of people resonate with toy trains. Many people, and I know our, our view is skewed, but people that are interested in toy trains will pop their head in. Many people are interested. What surprised us was, it didn't surprise us, was that older guys our age who grew up with toy trains, and everybody had toy trains, were very interested. And also finding out the 30s, 40s, and 50-year-olds, many of them had trains, smaller scales, but it was still a very popular thing. Little kids, sometimes you had to drag along. They would love it. We were open early this weekend for the Rad Fest and stayed late because of all the people we had coming in. I was open there Sunday, and people were stalking by because they promised their children to revisit the train display. Now, what has really surprised us is that the teens and 20-somethings, who we thought would have no interest in, because it's not a video screen, were amazed about it too. But here's something noisy and running and clanking around really attracted them. Now, Chris and I have engaged many of the people that have visited and talked to them about their past, connection with trains, especially around Christmas night. And we found that there is a need, we perceived, for a group of things, from modelers to enjoyers or miniature enthusiasts, not just trains. But we have slacker racing, model building, diorama building, dollhouses, you name it. But we're such a sparsely populated area, we didn't think every faction they had could get its own club. So we proposed state line miniatures. And state line was purposeful because we didn't want to include just Trinidad, we wanted to group everybody together. We've got 26 or something that have members so far. We've seen over 2,300 people from 40 states and 11 different countries, all to, and again, this is biased because they all seem very excited. I think we have encouraged people to pick up hobbies they had left before and encourage other people to pick up hobbies that they only thought about. There have been people that have come in and just, you know, I feel confident when they left, they went to see about getting train sets and signing trains and things like that. What our ask is, is to be able to stay in the space we are now. Now, I realize the company, state, or the city's been putting out RFPs to rent out the place, and we understand that. Chris and I are both businessmen. Chris is a landlord, and you generally wanna have money coming in for some space that you have. We are now registered as a 501(c). We put out our first grant request, and we put in, put out some more. But in that interim, we're asking if the city can let us stay there and give us a knowledgeable thing that we can stay there. We've been operating on the premise that next month, we might be going.
One minute, John. Sorry.
If we could stay longer, then we could invest our own money for some signage, to do things to attract more people. We've had field trips come through there. We've hosted a birthday party for a two-year-old girl. We have another class that wants to come through. We have a group from, we're telling that does homeschooling that wants to come through, and we, we still talk about the, the history of Trinidad, the history of trains and railroading in Trinidad, and we wanna be able to keep that going, at least so we can get funding for ourselves to be able to fund you. So our request is to be able to stay through January at least, to get through the holiday season, the, the big train season of Christmas. Anything else you'd like to add? That people that come in, they're real, they like the way this town is as far as cleanliness, they like the fun in this, the people, and having the trains really makes an impact on them to come back. Right. We've had people bring their friends back and everyone else to see the trains, because they, everybody knows a train enthusiast. So also to, to add to what he had to say, with the Rad Fest, yeah, a lot of people impressed with this town, they liked the town, they liked the area, but the thing that struck me the most was that a lot of them said how friendly people were here, which is, yeah, that's, that's a great thing to hear in the community. Okay? Take it down.
Mayor, before you go, gentlemen, in the exhibit you gave us, you have your employer identification number on here, and that's kind of a confidential, like tax filing number? Okay. So Mayor and Council, what I would recommend is, we either give all of these back and we can keep one, or we can like rip off the last three pages, if you would do that, please. And then the very last page is a letter of support from this, from Christopher Franks. So you'd be able to take that page off, the very back, and give them the two pages that are from the IRS.
Give the project, well, who owns this? And when we filed for grants, they wanted the whole.
Right, I get it. I just don't want that confidential number to get out.
Thank you.
There you go.
All right. And we got another letter of support for it. It didn't come in the line of comments.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just a reminder, Mr. What's your name? Mr. Valentine is taking notes, so anything that, that you can address after the meeting is welcome. Not tonight, but he will address what he already issued. Yeah, I wanna make that clear. Gloria Averon wants to talk about state line miniatures as well.
I'm happy to be here and to be with you city council members. I'm here to talk about the educational arm of the state line miniatures and currently the train layouts that they're very, the train layouts exhibit the STEM part of education, S-T-E-M, science, technology, experiments, experience, or examine, and mathematics. And through all of that, it brings problem solving to children and youth, and so better than a video screen does. And so we've got geometry working in there to know how to have these things not collide as they go around, and technology to hook up. If you go by there on your way home tonight, you'll see that there are lights on in some of the buildings, so somebody had to have close batteries or electricity or whatever. So we think it's an educational part for children in the area. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Lay wants to talk about the Colorado Employers Benefit Trust.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Jennifer Lay, and I stand before you today as the president of the Trinidad PD, FOP Lodge Number 70, representing the dedicated police officers and employees of the Trinidad Police Department. I'm here to express our deep concerns about the proposed changes to the city's healthcare plans, specifically the elimination of PPO 5, the plan chosen by 68% of the city's entire workforce. On September 9th, I was asked along with the two other union presidents to attend a meeting the following day, where the proposed changes to our insurance were discussed. During this meeting, we were informed that the city was exploring ways to reduce insurance costs and proposed several options for our members to consider. One option presented was eliminating PPO 5, which the city estimated could save $90,276.72. While we understand the need for fiscal responsibility, this proposal disproportionately impacts the majority of the city's employees, the entire city's employees. 91 out of 134 have chosen PPO 5. These are not just numbers. These are employees who rely on this plan to support their health and that of their families. Our members were told about this in September, just a few months from open enrollment. Following this meeting, and as requested by city staff, our union held a meeting on September 18th to present the options to our membership. After thoughtful discussion, our members overwhelmingly voted to retain PPO 5 as their preferred plan. We fully recognize the financial pressure facing the city, including reduced revenue and increased operational costs, as our employees face similar challenges in their own households, managing rising expenses while trying to maintain their financial stability and well-being. However, decisions of this magnitude affecting the health and well-being of so many employees must involve those who are directly impacted, and our members need more time than a few weeks' notice to find different alternatives to the plan that most of them are already enrolled in. On September 27th, I received an email from the HR Director stating its recommendation would be to eliminate PPO 5 and introduce PPO 8, and that recommendation would be presented at today's meeting. We had been led to believe that a meeting would be held on October 1st to gather feedback from all the union leaders ever after respective membership votes and before any presentation to this council. Unfortunately, that decision never occurred, I'm sorry, unfortunately, that discussion never occurred, and it was only by reviewing today's agenda that I discovered a resolution regarding health insurance was set to be voted on. This bypassing of critical conversations has left our employees feeling unheard and disregarded, especially given the significant impact these changes would have on their healthcare options. Our members, your employees, are the backbone of this city, and their health and well-being should be treated as a priority. We are respectfully asking the council to delay this vote and initiate a genuine discussion with the unions. Our membership has made their preference clear. We want to retain PPO 5. We urge you to consider this before moving forward with any decision today. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Zeb Williamson, River Bottom?
Thanks so much. I don't usually think about catching fire, but on the odd chance, I feel a lot safer about it tonight, so having all these mustaches here is a really good addition. I wanna share a little bit about our river bottom, because something I tell my students at school a lot is you can't do better until you know better, but you can't know better until you think different, so I'm hoping to offer some different thinking. So I'm hoping to offer some different thinking. I grew up here. One of your council members could probably attest to the fact that I nearly grew up in the River Bottom. I was there a lot. So as an adult, I've enjoyed taking my kids back to those places. Because River Bottoms are a really special ecological area. That's one of my specialties. I, obviously a master teacher at Trinity High School. I also work with Compact Resource Foundation. We do agricultural restoration in Africa and cultural restoration in Africa. And so rivers and creeks are an amazing ecological buffer. They create a zone for all kinds of improvements. But I want to suggest a different idea that there are also cultural buffers. And I think that's a problem we're facing. In an area that I used to spend a lot of time in as a kid, I've taken my own kids there and we've quit frequenting the area as we find so many needles, not just on the odd chance, but on multiple needles every time we visit the area. Also, when we take our paddle boards in the summer, we'll go to the new area where the waterfall is. We'll paddle board around in there. In fact, we'll put in upriver and paddle down. And then I'll leave them there and I'll walk back up along the riverwalk because it's not safe for them to come with me. Because if you, it's two o'clock in the afternoon on a Saturday, three o'clock. So it's not like dark o'clock. Commercial Street, underneath, there's people, and they're not just vaping. It's like full glassware and they're smoking crack and other hard drugs. And I wasn't there this, but I complained about this to a friend of mine who goes there as well. And he had shared that there were four people openly having sex under the bridge. And so there's these places that should be family areas, places we can go and enjoy. And I want to share one other story that links to this. I have a student who, about three years ago, she called social services and had herself removed from her home because she was living in an unsafe environment. Both parents addicted to drugs and lots of problems. And she was put into care with her grandma, who unfortunately died soon afterwards. And going back to her parents' home wasn't an option as they had moved in to the River Bottom population. And I've heard that there's a discussion around calling them homeless or calling them unhoused. And I think the thing that we need to lean towards and understand, we need to think different about, is this is actually a population of people who are intentionally breaking the law and living outside of the law and creating a harmful environment, both for us to experience, but also it's creating a harmful option. Maybe my students' parents would have dropped out of society anyway. But they live in a community where it's actually an option to leave your home and to move into a new home that's in the River Bottom. Because if you spend time down there, you'll see there's homes. They're, they're full structures. People live in them full-time. They have amenities set up. These are homes. And we're allowing this. And we give an option that you can do this instead of provide for a family. I have other students that I've seen holding cardboard signs and stopped to talk to them. And they said, yeah, it just seemed like more fun and easier to do. I've moved into the River Bottom. That was their option instead of college.
One minute, sir, sorry.
And I have students that, that died there because that was an option. Because they were given the opportunity to move into a community that provided addictions and shelter where they could live a lifestyle that ended their lives. I'm not asking that we fix a homeless problem. I'm asking that we enforce a culture change and create a buffer where we create safety again, where we provide the correct path for people to walk on. Because this isn't safe. It's not safe for me and my children, nor is it safe for people who are making the decisions to move into this place. It shouldn't exist. It should be an ecological buffer that is kept as a safe place for a river and not a place for endangered humans. Thanks.
Thank you.
Travis Kneeseal also wants to talk about the Colorado Employer Benefit Trust.
First, thank you guys for your time this evening. We appreciate you letting us get prepared and speak. Travis Kneeseal, I'm the Vice President of the IFF Local Six, the Firefighters Union. And I wanted to take a moment just to say we also stand in solidarity with what Officer Lay said. We took a vote amongst all of our fire department, all of our members, and it was unanimous that we, we would hope that you would consider taking time to at least think about the, the PPO five before we were to move forward with that. That's all I have for it. Thank you.
Ron Coro, and I don't know what this acronym stands for. Ron, it's M-S-A-B. What is that? Yeah, I know, but what is the, what is the union name?
Ten seventy-four, absolutely. Probably. We also want to let you guys know that we are in agreement with police and fire for the PPO five. So we're just grabbing that one with the best. Thank you.
Thanks, man. Mark Zoller wants to talk about pickleball. Mark Zoller? I guess it was an interesting. Thank you all. Item number six is consent agenda approval. I'll read through the consent agenda items first. Item six A is approved. Oh, I'm sorry. See it really in the, I apologize. Item five, council reports.
Mr.?
Well, just what I kind of stated at the last meeting. ARPA is having a decrease in the rates and that. They'll, the meeting that's going to take place on October thirtieth will be kind of a final discussion to which plan they're taking and what will see as a weight rate decrease. So we hope that that'll take place. And we should know by the end of that, October thirtieth, when I have the meeting in. And other than that, ARPA's going well. Really, so it seems to be working out real well for us.
No reports.
Um, so I, I was able to attend the South Central Council of Governments meeting last week. I just want to briefly mention a few of the things that we're doing there. And I don't know how familiar everyone is with it, but the South Central Council of Government provides a lot of services to the city of Trinidad, to important populations and sometimes disadvantaged populations. But it's something that provides great benefit. We support work at the Senior Citizen Center. There's public transport. We implement bus tang. We provide medical rides to Southern Colorado, to those that need it. We provide rides in Trinidad to people that need it. We provide low-interest housing rehabilitation loans to people that need that. Meals on Meals, we assist in that. And we also administer county federal funds for food distribution. And that's only some of the things that we do. In mentioning that, there's, there's no such thing as free lunch, really. And unfortunately, we are looking at potentially having to raise the dues that all of our member groups, agencies pay to, to COG, to help maintain that. And these, these aren't exceptionally onerous, but it is something that we may need to be looking at for budgetary consideration. And the South Central Council of Government is looking at every means possible to defray or negate the cost increase. But I did want to mention that it may be on the horizon. That being said, South Central Council of Government continues to spearhead the effort to oppose the combining of the South Central and the Southeastern TPR. That's going to be critically important. They're working in combination with CCI to oppose that. Hopefully, there'll be a legislative answer for that. So I will keep you posted. The next TPR is next month. And if possible, I'd like to request that the acting city manager, potentially the mayor, attend. If possible, there's just some important things coming up. And some exciting things. We continue the expansion of the transportation barn that will help increase services. And I know it's not related specifically to Trinidad, but I do think it's nice to mention. We have ARPA, American Recovery Protection Act funds, entirely funding Senior Citizen Center in Walsenburg. And that's going to be opening soon. It's nice. I mean, in effect, it's our neighbor city to the north. And they'll finally have a place to meet this, you know, similar cars and ice. So that'd be good. I did want to request, if we can, to have, and I know it's an ongoing situation, but I think that it's important and it's something that we all want, a work session to update council and those that are working on it as to the progress of camping, potential camping bans that we've discussed, access to the park, and just make a means to, in effect, reclaim the River Bottom specifically for the people of Trinidad. That should be their fair and equal right to use. Secondly, if, if at some point, I know that, you know, work session time's at a premium, but I think it would be a good idea, something that we have discussed a lot and moved around a lot, but if we could have a work session where we could cement in place what, what position we are on with the pickleball courts. It's just something that's existed for a long time. And I think that would be really beneficial to nail down. That's, that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Just an FYI here. I asked Audra to put that on the work session as well. And we're going to go through review of all the capital improvement projects. So that will be part of that. So it's on there already.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it.
That is.
Okay. Just a couple of things. I want to, I, I volunteered along with several people from the city government, city staff at the Rad Festival this year. It was really pretty amazing to see how downtown Trinidad came to life and more than it is usually on the weekend. I want to thank anybody associated with the city that helped with that, put on that event. It was very successful. And through my volunteering for this event, I was very impressed as to what Lifetime Sports gives back to Trinidad. And I think it's important. I know I got a couple of complaints about traffic. And it was somewhat inconvenient, but not for very long and not as severe as it could have been. The Hispanic Chamber made money by doing some services for the after-party. Honi High School, what they do is their students and their teachers and their parents volunteer to do the registration. And then they're like gophers for all of the event. And what Lifetime does is they, they give Honi money so these kids can go on their field trips. And they've been, Honi's school has been doing it for several, several years. Trinidad Youth Club, Mr. Walsh was there volunteering. And I was, well, I didn't realize this, that Lifetime Sports donated fourteen bikes to the youth club here in Trinidad. And those kids use those bikes year-round. So I got to meet the, the lady that's in charge of this event and several others. And it was good because I got to make a connection with her. And we're going, we need more events of that nature in Trinidad. We need events that pay for themselves and also contribute back to the community. So I want, over this next year, try to continue to keep in touch with her so we can maybe get some other events in Trinidad. That was really great. And also, she is in charge of the Economic Development Board in Leadville. Leadville's great for outdoor biking and outdoor recreation. And that's what Trinidad wants, to be an outdoor rec community. So she is going to talk, she talked to Dr. Epper and the Ms. Loudon, who is in charge of the emergent campus. So there's a connection there. So I know it may, might not be important to you all, but I think it's important that we make these connections to try and benefit our community. Not only, we have an economic development partner possibly now, along with other, with other events that might come to town. So she's, I, I told, I can't remember what her last name is. Her first name's Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. I gave her, I told her I'd give her a week to recuperate and then we'll talk. Also, I want to remind council that October eighth at ten o'clock at the County Commissioners, the Army is bringing, Fort Carson is bringing some people down to talk about their request for the White Paper Letter from the city, the letter of support from the city of Trinidad. And I, it is really important that those of you that did get to hear what the Army, why the Army is requesting this, that you be at this meeting. And any citizens that are, excuse me, interested, that you be at the County Commissioners Chambers at ten o'clock in the morning on October eighth. So the people from Fort Carson will be there to talk about. So thank you for indulging me. I just wanted to make sure that people in Trinidad understand how important that Rad Festival is. I also wanted to thank you again for those who helped. Item six is the Consent Agenda Approval. Item six A, approval of irregular meeting minutes of September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, and the special meeting minutes of September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Item six B, approval of a special event permit application filed by Arthur Roy Mitchell, Memorial Incorporated, for October twelfth and nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Item six C, approval of retail establishment permit renewal application filed by A.R. Mitchell Memorial Incorporated at one fifty East Main Street. Item six D, approval of Colorado Interstate Gas Company LLC agreements. And I'm not going to go through all that. It's, nope, no, I get it. No Notice Storage Transportation Delivery Service Agreement Rate Schedule and Number Two Transportation Service Agreement Rate Schedule for that. Item six E, approval of bonus funding, one million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Item six F, approval of payroll, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four through October eleventh, twenty twenty-four. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Plague of order.
Yes, sir.
Mayor? I'm not sure of the mechanism to request it, but before proceeding, is there any way to have at least a brief explanation of item six D? Which is? The Colorado Interstate Gas Company?
Sure. I apologize, Mr. Crowe was going to be here, but tested for positive. So this has been in place historically grandfathered in since Mr. Fernandez authored this with C.I.G., Kinder Morgan. It is an agreement that we are one of the few gas customers on that line that have this. It's, it's for our storage contract. We don't want to lose it. It's for our transportation. And it names all the stations wherever we are able to transport from. So when our NPGA nominates for us our gas usage, you know, based on weather and everything, they go through this agreement. They, they recommend that we do not let this lapse.
In effect, is maintaining the status quo then?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to check.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Call the board, please.
Langson?
Yes.
Debono?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item 7A, under Public Hearings, 7A, Public Hearing for Consideration of An Ordinance Repealing and Reenacting Articles 7, 11, 13, and 14 of Chapter 2 Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code and the summary statement. In conjunction with city councils, strategic goals, and an effort to relieve the workload of the Public Works Department, there shall be a new Parks Recreation Community Enrichment Department established that will take over the maintenance of city-owned recreational property and community enrichment programs. This department will be responsible for the organizing and directing of recreation programs, the creation of trails and outdoor recreation amenities, and the maintenance of all city parks, landscapes, and other vegetation. Additionally, this department will also house the employees responsible for city events and festivals, the welcome center, a portion of the tourism efforts, and manage the space to create facility. The hearing is now open.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The ordinance as presented to you in your packet this evening is in final form, following the last couple of meetings. And as the mayor outlined, it would form a Parks Recreation and Community Enrichment Department. Keep in mind that obviously the timing of that's going to depend largely on our, our budget for 2025, but we'd like to have it in place. It doesn't mean that it's going to happen tomorrow, but we would like to see this happen. It does meet one of the goals of the strategic plan, and I think it would further a lot of what the community even envisions our parks should be, because it consolidates some efforts. Do you have any questions?
Aaron, do you have any questions?
My question was, and you alluded to it in the sense of, by voting yeses, we put this, the structure in place to be able to implement it, but it is going to be constrained by the budget to implement it.
Absolutely.
And as, as we develop that budget and are able, this will come to its full potential.
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have questions past that. I mean, it is, it is something that the strategic plan, you know, we're working towards, and with the vision of labor, I mean, it definitely makes sense. People working on that. So I have no further questions, ma'am.
Mr. Thurman?
Just appreciate you going to the, going through the strategic plan, staying on course. And so all we have to do is watch the budget, right?
Exactly.
All right. That's all I have.
Mr. Trill?
No, I think it's much needed. It'll give a focus to an area that we'll be able to divide and conquer that way. I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Shum?
I don't have any.
Mr. Debono?
No.
This is long time coming. It's not here yet, but at least we're laying the foundation for something to come. I think as Trinidad increases, maybe our parks and recreational assets, this is going to be something that's going to be essential. So, thank you. Anybody in the audience to speak for or against this ordinance? The hearing is now closed. Item 7A1, Second Reading of An Ordinance Repelling and Reenacting Articles 7, 11, 13, and 14 of Chapter 2 Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Debono?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item 7B, Public Hearing for Consideration of An Ordinance Repelling and Reenacting Section 2-18 Subcode 1 Administrative Officers' Departmental and Personnel Charts of Chapter 2 Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code. And I will read the summary on that one as well. It is, I'll read the background information, just so those of you in the audience will understand what it is. Section 218 of the municipal code sets forth the administrative officers of the city. Currently, the code lacks any reference to a natural gas director. Additionally, if the reorganization ordinance is approved, this ordinance would identify the Parks and Recreation and Community Development Director as an administrative office. The hearing is now open.
Mayor, members of council, I'm here for questions. Since you've read the background, it covers basically what we're doing with this ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Debono?
No.
No.
No questions.
No questions, Mayor?
No, it's pretty straightforward. Thank you, Audrey. Anybody in the audience to speak for or against? Okay, the hearing is now closed. Second Reading of An Ordinance Repelling and Reenacting Section 2-18 Subcode 1 Administrative Officers' Departmental and Personnel Charts of Chapter 2 Administration of the Trinidad Municipal Code. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item 7C, Public Hearing for Consideration of An Ordinance Granting Local Landmarking Designation to the Historic Property, which is located at 135 and 1/2 North Animus, City of Trinidad, Los Animus County. The summary statement on this is, City of Trinidad submitted an application to landmark this property as a significant historic structure. The Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed the application and recommends approval of the landmark status. The hearing is now open. Who is going to present for that? Anybody?
So, Mayor, I have as much information as you do. I, this, these are, these two items are, have been in process, so I'll let Audra.
So the Historic Preservation Commission has chosen the historic train to landmark. Part of the landmarking process will open it up to potential brands, and we just felt like it was, they felt like it was an appropriate property to landmark in our city.
Mr. Williamson?
Thank you, Mayor. Audra, do you know, well, first off, I, I think it's a really nice idea. It's, it's something, you know, I, one of my earliest memories is being in awe of the train, and while I was young, I think you could climb on it. There was no fence. You said love to do that, and my mom was shopping in Safeway. But, and I would like to see this happen, but does it, is there any potential that it will encumber the city with expenses that will be potentially hard to cover if, if it will be held to different standards, you know, with, with a landmark status?
Well, basically, what would happen is if, for instance, the city decided, because we own the train, we decided, well, you know, we want to change the appearance of it. That goes in front of the Historic Preservation Commission. That's probably the only thing that would, the only effect this would have. There's just, you know, it's kind of like how History Colorado treats historic properties, same thing. If you're going to make alterations to it, you've got to have an approval first.
So, I mean, there's, you know, if, say we're going to repaint it, if the brass, bronze, whatever, valves and armatures, whatever, that are on that train, there's not going to be a requirement to restore those to original, because that could be really expensive if we can't find grants to cover it. I mean, then that falls to us. So to your knowledge, that doesn't exist?
It should not exist.
Okay. I, I love the train, and I really would like to see it protected. So I think it's a good idea, as long as we're not, you know, saddled with any expenses that we won't be able to meet. But I think it's a good idea pending that.
Mr. Thurman?
No questions. I think it's a great, great idea.
I always thought it was already landmarked. So it's been there forever. No, I think it's great. It's gonna open more doors for us. We're gonna be able to get a little bit more care for it if we need to. So it's great.
Mr. Shum?
No questions.
Mr. Debono?
It's a capital idea. Everyone loves the train, and see how it could go unmarked like that for very much longer.
Just a question. Do all of the landmarking designations go through Historic Preservation Commission?
Do they all go through? Local ones, yes. All local do.
Okay. I'm just trying to educate myself. Anybody in the audience to speak for or against the designation for the train? Mr. Nystrom?
I think as railroad enthusiasts, we have to, I think as railroad enthusiasts, I can speak for Chris and myself and many other people in the community that this is an important part of our history. Railroading was such a big part in the development of Trinidad, and to have a display like that is just a wonderful thing. That's basically it. Thank you.
I'd say it's right down your alley, but it's right down your track, is what I'm saying. Thank you. Anyone else? The hearing is now closed. Item 7C1, Second Reading of An Ordinance Granting Local Landmarking Designation to the Historic Property, which is located at 135 and 1/2 North Animus Street, City of Trinidad, Los Animus County, Colorado. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Debono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item 7D, Public Hearing for Consider, Consideration of An Ordinance Granting Local Landmark Designation to the property known as the Trinidad Waterworks Building located at 223 West Cedar Street, City of Trinidad, Los Animus County, Colorado. That's pretty much straightforward, so I won't say anymore. Hearing is now open.
I'm here for questions. I think you, you know this property well. It's the old waterworks building. It has had some History Colorado grants previously, actually quite a few grants previously, and so any restoration would be to the historic character, to support the historic character of the building anyhow. And so this would landmark it, and we would further that effort.
Mr. Debono?
Audra, does it need very much of a makeover in terms of renovation and modification?
Yes.
So I could speak to that. Here, when they did the exterior, the exterior is pretty much done. There's some doors and windows that could be replaced, but the interior is in need of care a lot. But I think this possibly helps with grants and other things that the city may want to try and apply for.
Okay. Mr. Shum?
I have no questions.
No questions.
I'm, I'm just curious if there's any public waterworks building enthusiasts in the audience? What I was, and it's, it's, it's probably not in any concern, and if it is, there wouldn't be much we can do about it, but the mural that was installed around that, will, will that be in violation of anything if, if that's passed?
No.
Okay.
It's the structure itself that's being landmarked, not the entire property, or the structure.
I have no questions.
Hopefully, I have no questions as to comment. Maybe when we get money for that portion of the riverwalk, maybe we can do something with that, you know. Okay, anybody in the audience to speak for? Yes, sir. The man who knows doesn't need any introduction.
But I will introduce myself, Mayor, Councilman, Tom Murphy, owner of the Chappelle House. Delos Allen Chappelle is not well-known, but he's the one who built Waterworks, and then eventually sold it to the city of Trinidad. Thanks to, this is one of the books I have that was produced by Ken Fletcher from doing years and years of research. And so I've got all the history on Delos Allen Chappelle, my, my building, the funeral service and everything else. And I, I thought I'd just take a minute to, to read this to you. Chappelle died in February 2016 up in Denver. When he passed away, he was worth a million and a half dollars. Project that out today. But Delos Allen Chappelle, Colorado capitalist, dies in Denver. Delos A. Chappelle, one of the best-known of Colorado capitalists and builders, former owner of the Trinidad Waterworks, organizer of the Victor Fuel Company, died yesterday afternoon in Denver from pneumonia complicated with the effects of an injury sustained last January by falling a sidewalk. As one of the big men of Colorado, there's, I can't read what that says, before more than 20 years, and maintained extensive business and industrial interests up to the time of his death. He was formerly interested in the First National Bank in the city. I guess interested means that he was a part of that. Mr. Chappelle, who was regarded as one of the men who helped build the industries of the state, he was one of the first men to recognize the opportunities provided by the Trinidad Goldfields. Let's skip through some of this. He first came to Colorado in 1879. Friends urged him to visit Trinidad. Soon afterwards, he came out here to investigate. And in 1883, he came here with his family to make it his home shortly after arriving in Colorado. He acquired an interest in the First National Bank in Trinidad, later was interested in mining and coke enterprises in the section. At what time, he is owner of Trinidad Waterworks. He sold it to the city with H.J. Alexander of Denver. He organized the Capital National Bank in the summer of 1902. He built the Chappelle House. That's why I renamed it. Blombaca. People don't understand the significance that Chappelle had, and I'm working on putting this history together so people realize how significant he was. A lot of people call it the Chappelle House, but it's no, it's Chappelle. It's French. When we came here in the early 80s, there was a story that he was bidding on the state capitol to get the, the, the business for the construction and the rock. But the architect that was here says, we don't have the type of stone or whatever that they needed. But I found an article that actually says he bid on the state capitol. And the story is, is that they gave him this house and built it for him to keep him out of Denver. So, you know, I found some anecdotal evidence, you know. Politics hasn't changed much, has it?
No.
So, anyway, I've so much history in the last 40 years, and I've spent the last 40 years fixing this building up. But while this meeting was going on, one of the first projects I did after my father passed away in 93 was to convert the carriage house into an apartment. And one of the first days I went in there, I just decided I had somebody that was going to do some work for me. I went and pulled down some wainscoting, and out popped a wallet, you know, with a leather band around it. And, and so I was like, wow, look at this. And I photocopied it all. And this is on a Wednesday, and I asked a couple people at town. I said, have you ever heard of Pete, I don't know if I can say his last name. They said, no. And Friday afternoon, I was over, Sabine McWhorter's had a restaurant , I was having lunch, and I get a phone call and said, hey, we were down visiting Trinidad, and we had a relative that was buried up at the Catholic cemetery, and we don't have a marker for it. And, and we'd really like to get a marker. And I said, what's his name? And they said, Pete Blank. And I'm like, what? I said, I found his wallet three days ago. And they're like, what? And it had pictures of family and everything else. What are the odds? He, he was born in Hone in 1928. He died in Las Vegas in 1953, and I found his wallet in 1993. And two days later, the family calls, and, and then they came, it was a Friday afternoon, and by, by 6 o'clock, a dozen other family members was here. And I just got a call this evening. The guy's asking me if I can help find or get another marker for the grave. So there's so much history in this, and that's why I just wanted to get up and speak on behalf of the Waterworks, which Chappelle built and then sold to the town. So, anyway, that's it. Just thought I would enlighten you guys all on the history, because there is, I mean, that's what, what we're. there is, I mean, that's what, what we're, what this is about, is the history that we have in this community. It's so impactful. And, and thanks to Ken Fletcher, I have a lot of it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
James Neistrom, fairly new to this town. The Water Works building looks in great shape from what I've seen. I do not know all the details ins and outs. Now, as historical preservation, things like that, will the interior be restored to what it was? Or is it something that could be purposed to use for other things?
That's the sixty-four thousand million question.
We've been paid off.
We'll address it when, when the money goes.
I was wondering if there was, there was any kind of restriction that they'd have to return it the way?
I don't believe so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak for against? Okay, the hearing is closed. Item seventy-one, second reading of an ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property known as the Trinidad Water Works located at two twenty-three West Cedar Street, City of Trinidad, Los Anamis County, Colorado. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes. Item eight, unfinished business. There is none. Item nine, miscellaneous business, line eight, consideration of the purchase of two vehicles for the Trinidad Police Department. Who is going to present? Internment Chief, Tom Avich?
Mayor Council, thanks for having me. So, an opportunity came up. You guys know, in the past, we've had issues trying to get patrol cars because of supply chain issues and manufacturing changes in the industry where they're changing vehicles to different things. And the windows are really short between ordering or to get a car made for you. From, and they just don't put police cars on the lots very often. So one of the dealerships contacted me and said, hey, we had an agency cancel an order of four cars. Are you guys interested? I told them our budget situation wasn't looking too good. Talked to Cheryl and kind of explained our situation with aging vehicles and stuff that, you know, patrol cars are beat up pretty badly out there in the, in the world. So she agreed to use reserve funds to get us a couple of these cars because they are on the ground right now at the dealership. They're on a state contract. And the equipment, did you guys get the?
Yes.
All that, all that's under state contract and everything?
Okay.
So, I didn't want to pass up an opportunity and maybe not be able to get some cars in the city. Was gracious enough to say, go ahead and see if council will do it.
Mr. Williamson, you have questions?
Chief, thank you for pursuing this. I mean, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained, obviously.
Right.
So I did have a question and potentially Cheryl might be able to help. Obviously, you know, we're looking at a budget that is more constrained and difficult to manage going forward. So what, what will the real-world impact of using the reserve funds be in the upcoming budget?
While Cheryl comes up, I will say that this is like an opportunity.
Yeah.
That probably won't be there in next year or coming year. So just that's it.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
Uh, he wanted to know what the impact?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the, we have money set aside in the fleet fund for Chief Bakarek's apparatuses. And so far, through June, that fund has earned seventy thousand dollars in interest. And that's the money we're putting toward this. The additional is sitting in contingency if we don't expend the contingency line item. If we do expend the contingency line item, then the remainder would come from reserves. So it's not too much to be in the reserves.
You know, I, thank you. I appreciate, appreciate that, Cheryl. I think that it's important that we put, put the city's money where our mouth is and support the police department in a way that's meaningful. And I think two new vehicles would be a big help, obviously. You know, pending further discussion and input potentially from Mr. Valentine, I think that this is something that I would advocate going forward after hearing Cheryl's answer. It, you know, we, we have to ensure that you guys are able to do your job and this will, this will carry us into the future. I have, I have no further questions, ma'am.
Mr. Thurman?
Were you able to negotiate a low price concern? They didn't have a, anywhere to send these cars? Were you able to?
No, they, the MSRP actually was.
Thirty-six?
Forty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. We got an eighty-five-hundred dollar discount from the, from the contract that we're there.
Okay, just checking to see if we were able to squeeze, squeeze them a little bit.
Eighty-five-hundred dollars off was pretty.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Mr. Trill?
Could we get floor mats?
They have, they have rubber floors, so they're easy to wipe.
All right.
They usually don't, they usually don't give you a floor mat anymore.
It's a nice upgrade, Mike. It's your fingertips, so go ahead and grab it.
Is, is, how do you pronounce it? Chalmers? Chalmers?
Chalmers.
Are they part of the Source, Sourcewell? Are they?
I don't know what contract they're under. It just, they told me it was a, they hold a State of Colorado contract and a New Mexico.
Okay.
So.
All righty, that's what I needed to know. I have no questions. All righty, sir. Thank you.
I have one clarifying question. It's not, it's not for you.
Okay.
Pending a vote, obviously. I mean, this fits into the, the city's procurement method? So?
Yes. State contract price, so, yes.
No question.
Okay. Motion to consider purchase of two vehicles for the Trinidad Police Department.
So moved. Second?
Call the vote, please.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Debona?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes. Item nine B, extra territorial three-quarter inch water tap request from Phyllis and Terry Walsh located next to their cottage at twenty-seven seven seven seven, State Highway twelve. Thank you for your patience, Walsh. You've been sitting there for a while.
This is the Mayor Council staff. We have for consideration approval from City Council for three-quarter inch water tap request from Phyllis and Terry Walsh. Phyllis and Terry Walsh have requested three-quarter inch water tap served the new Barnumini Home that is currently under construction in the Madrid area located next to their current house at two seven seven seven, State Highway twelve, Trinidad, Colorado. They're getting a new address assignment, which I believe you have done already. Is that correct?
Correct.
So they have a new address for the new Barnumini already. Upon approval by City Council, the Walshes will be required to pay the necessary fees of seven thousand nine hundred eleven dollars, which includes a planning estimate fee, water rights acquisition fee, tap fee, and metered improvements. We do have plenty of water for just the residential taps, so that's not an issue.
What's the new address?
What's the new address? Do you have it?
Yes. Two seven seven eight three.
Okay.
Two seven seven eight three, Highway twelve.
I'm sorry.
Two seven seven eight three, Highway twelve.
Okay. Trinidad, Colorado.
Questions? Mr. Debona?
No, I have no questions.
No. I have none.
No questions.
No questions.
Mr. Downs, have they been advised of the, the city's policy for extra territorial? Because they must have a tap already on the existing.
They have an existing tap for the existing home. The new tap will be an additional tap for the new Barnumini.
Understood. But I just want to make sure that they understand that whoever get into a situation, you know, I just want to make sure they're.
The extra territorial rule. So if we ever get into water restrictions, extra territorial taps, which are outside the city limits, will be the first to be shut down if we ever came to that. So that's just part of our ordinance.
Good point.
But it's, that's standard for extra territorial.
All righty. Any questions? I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes. Thanks, Mark. Better sit, stay there for.
I got one more.
Oh, thank you. Item C, water tanks rehabilitation project, Black and Beach Corporation contract amendment.
Here I have for consideration and approved at City Council to amend our current professional service agreement with Black and Beach Corporation. The original engineering contract was for nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, which will be increased to three hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is an increase of two hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred and one dollars. The original contract was to do the design for the water tank rehabilitation, which was the rehabilitation of three water tanks, the Allendale Tank, Northside Tank, and Southside Tank. There are three one-point-five gallon tanks. The fourth tank is to replace the water storage tank at Monument Lake. The design is complete. We are limited on time right now. In order not to lose that ARPA grant, we have to have that proper wording, Cheryl, committed.
Obligated.
There you go. By the end of December. So we're running out of time. We need to hurry and get this advertised and get it out to bid, awarded bid, and get it council by December so that we don't lose that million dollar ARPA grant. There is a lot involved moving forward. There's a lot moving parts. We currently have been, we have the million dollar ARPA grant. We just got approved for a million dollar DOLA grant. We're applying for two million dollars in the state revolving fund, which we, after last night's meeting, we're going to move to two-point-six million dollars to make sure we cover all of our costs. We also have a million dollars in capital funds, just in case we need that for funding so that we don't have to borrow any more money. We've lost a lot of time. We don't know where the bids are gonna come in at. We have the engineer's estimate. That's where we got our original numbers. Black and Beach will be, if approved by council, will be supervising the whole project. We will have our own employees on site every day overseeing the project. They will be overseeing the project. Hardwater drinking water requires some specialties, which, like UT readings, where they, they come in and they have divers go in the tank. They'll make sure there's not a sediment there. They actually take X-rays of the wall thickness to make sure that the wall thickness is still in specs on our water storage tanks. We have to hire NACE inspectors on site to, for, to protect our environment when we're doing any painting. So there's a lot of specialty services involved with this, which they already have lined up in order to move forward to try to get this done by the end of December as far as the award, so we don't lose that million dollar grant. So that's where we're at right now. Hoping we can move forward with council's approval.
Questions? Anymore?
No, just if time's running out, I guess it would be a best time to move forward and get those bids out.
Yes.
Yeah, no questions. I agree with you, Mark. Can I get that done? No questions. I was, thank you for your presentation tonight. I was curious, you said that we've lost a lot of time in the project. What, what was the cause of that?
We had our, we have to do our sanitary surveys with the State Health Department. They come down. We're required to do diver inspections every three to five years. So we hired divers. They go dive our tanks. They back the sediment off the tanks. They do inspections. And one of the recommendations that we have to our tank rehabilitation, there's rust on the surface of the ceilings of the tanks where the water levels don't touch, with all the humidity in there. They don't have proper venting. The ladders aren't in compliance. So that's part of the tank, water tank rehabilitation. It's been a process that we've been moving forward, trying to get funding for this. And it's, we're, it's still a recommendation by the state. It's not, we're not being fined yet, but we want to get this done prior to that. Especially, costs keep escalating the longer we put this off. So we need it before, before this goes on. The Allendale Tank is our newest tank. It was constructed in nineteen ninety-three. Our Southside Tank, which is up here on Reservoir Hill as we know it, was constructed in nineteen sixty-seven. Our Northside Tank, which is located on Simpson's Rest, was also installed in nineteen sixty-seven. None of these tanks have ever been drained and, and rehabilitated. And we need to do that in order to get more life expectancy out of them. Otherwise, we're going to end up replacing all of them. So the Monument Lake Tank is beyond its life expectancy. It's, we've had pinhole holes in it all along. I believe it's a twenty-three to twenty-five thousand gallon tank. We're just gonna replace that one. That'll be done in the off-season hours when Monument Lake closes, so we can replace that one.
Okay, thank you. I mean, so my understanding is there's, there's just been hurdles that have surfaced and you, you keep having to jump those.
And yes, we're ready to move forward. If we can stay with Black and Beach, they did the design. They have the inspections on hand, ready to move forward. We can stay with it. We're ready just, just to move forward right now.
Okay. And then, so the outlay of three hundred seventy-eight thousand and some, that is from the capital outlay of water infrastructure improvements, right?
I believe so. Is that true, Cheryl?
Yes.
Yes.
So that, that's, that would be a match for the grants that we're discussing? Is that correct?
What we have right now, the total that we had projected, estimated was four million six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars due to the project. We amend the professional service agreement. It'll increase to two hundred eighty-three thousand eight hundred and one dollars, which is a total of four million nine hundred and sixteen eight hundred and one dollars. We have a one million dollar ARPA grant, a million dollar DOLA. The state revolving fund, we're gonna increase to two-point-six million, which would be a total of four-point-six million. But we have another million in our capital funds to cover anything above that, which will kick to five-point-six million. So the money is, is appropriated to move forward with this.
Okay, right. But I mean, our outlay of three hundred seventy-eight, is that for matching? Our, our, because, I mean, if the total is four-point-six, we have funds that through grants that exceed that, right?
It's not matching. The SRF fund is going to be... We don't have match. We have a, well, yes, it will be a part of a match.
Okay.
The, yeah. There, there may be some loan forgiveness on some of these funds at even fifty percent. So as we, before we get approved for loans, we don't know what the interest rates are gonna be, but there may be some loan forgiveness. That's another reason for moving forward. We don't know if there's gonna be a loan forgiveness if we miss this cycle. So, so we're expecting to get some of that, or at least we're hoping to.
Okay. And then the last question, if it's approved tonight, do you, do you think it's likely that we're able to meet the deadline?
Yes, we have a schedule in place. We are, right now, as of October, we're planning advertising bid down October. We have a bid opening in November, a project award in December, a new state construction in February, and a completion of the structure by December twenty twenty-six.
Okay. I mean, everyone, you know, we've all seen the headlines, where was it? In Jackson, Jacksonville, right? Where, I mean, the water is deplorable and everyone's having problems. So obviously, we want to avoid that. Thank you for, you know, riding herd on this, jumping the hurdles and hopefully getting it into, into be on time. That's, that's a lot of grant money to miss out on. So, so thank you for, thank you for the effort to capture that grant money. We, we really appreciate that. We, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have no further questions.
Mr. Thurman? Do you have any questions?
So last night, you held a hearing. Was it last, was it last night?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, days get mixed up. Last night there was a hearing this entire project.
Thank you.
And I was wondering, maybe for clarity and just information for what we got, that was, was that recorded by any chance?
It was, you can watch it. We had a public meeting and Dan Kuhler with Black and Beach was here to present, so, and that was recorded.
Very, and there was a handout that was, that is great. There's a shortcut, there's, there's schedules and everything on here. So, you know, if that would be possible, maybe we can get a copy of that. As well, for those that didn't, this way we can kind of go through and look and see how the breakdown is.
Correct.
So, and thank you last night for inviting us to that.
Sorry it was last minute, but I wanted to make the numbers, so.
No questions.
Oh, we had the presentation last night. She had a lot of light on this project and, you know, we've always been really fortunate in this community to have really great drinking water and a lot of it, so.
Yeah.
We have to make sure that that continues.
Correct.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Do I have a motion on item 9C, Water Tank Rehab Project with Black and Beach Corporation?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote.
Devono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Gregel?
Yes, this is my vice, vice minister. This keeps me on track. He throws me the look. Item 9D, Submission to City Council of a Draft for the 2025 Budget and the Capital Budget Estimates and Set Public Hearings on October 15, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. Do I have a motion to accept or start the budget proceedings?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. There was only answers?
Torsion.
Thank you. So excited.
Good evening, Council. I presented the, as required by charter, councils to receive the preliminary budget in the first meeting of October. This is a very preliminary budget. We will be discussing capital outlay at the next work session, and then we intend to have a budget work session, most likely on October 21st unless other items push that out of the way. Anyway, this is the starting off point for us to get going on for 2025's budget.
Any questions?
You'll have to get some later.
Does this have to battle, Cheryl?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, thank you. So start looking at that. There will be a quiz on Monday.
Really?
I need a motion.
So move.
Oh, did I? Okay, second.
Yeah, you did everything.
Okay.
I just have to do roll call.
Okay, go for it.
Trigell?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Gregel?
Yes. Item 9D, Selection of Search Firm for City Manager.
Good evening, Council. Here we are finally having a discussion about city manager. So we submitted to you what we thought were our, the three top firms. We received 10 proposals for city manager, 11 for police chiefs, so this is our first step in the process. So we recommended Strategic Government Resources, Columbia Limited, and Government Professional Services. When we were looking at these, we, I don't want to say we didn't look at the cost, but it was one of the last things we looked at. We were really looking for the content, the RFP, and what they provided for the services. That was our first, the first thing we were really looking at. So I outlined for you what we felt were the strongest points of these three firms. For you to go from there. If you have any questions, Mr. Williamson.
Would you mind at, at least giving a high-level overview of how this hiring process will go from here? Just after this firm is selected, I mean, because I think it's important to discuss this in the context of that.
So regardless, you know, the processes are incredibly similar from firm to firm to firm.
Right.
So once you've made the decision, whichever firm you decide to go with, then first, once we contact them, and they will make an arrangement to either come down to see you in person to talk about what, what your expectations are of the new city manager, kind of get a feel, again, depending on which firm it is, how much detail they go into to try to get a feel for what the organization's like, what we need, those types of things. And then within that, they will go back, they'll develop a brochure for advertising. Once that's completed, then they, they go forward with their advertising, which they have, you know, all of these outlets to advertise on. A lot of them know previous city managers. They know city managers that are looking around, so they put all their little feeders out. The candidates will put their names in, send in their information to this firm. They will go through and vet them. They vet them the first time to pick out candidates that fit what you guys chose as your profile, fit the education, fit all of that. They do a brief look to see that they're not, you know, that they're being honest in what they're presenting to you. And then they will bring the top, they also do backgrounds. They will bring the top, say, 10 candidates to you, however it works out. And then from that, you guys will go through those and pick out perhaps the top four, however many you want to look at. They do a more intense background check at that point. And then they would come back to you and arrange, they would help with arranging interviews, and they would start the whole interview process.
Okay. Thank you, so. I guess the question that I had, I was, I was hoping to go last. I don't want to let the cat out of the bag for everybody else. But did, did you have a firm that you thought was the frontrunner? And if so, why?
Well, yeah, that my, my choice frontrunner was Strategic Government Resources. I really liked, you know, they, they, most of them put in the, the project team. I really liked the team that they presented, the guy that, the guy that's going to be leading, has been a project manager for a lot of years. Wherever he was, he had long stints, and I liked that. I liked the way they suggested, on my bullet points, they call out and speak to the importance of the interviews that they have with you, that they have with staff, that they have with even community members, that's what they want. So they do a lot, it felt like kind of a deep dive into, to what was important to everyone involved. And they, they specifically called out that they have listening sessions. They have a very good background embedding system. I thought that sounded very good. The one thing that was interesting is that they assist the city in creating this advanced exercise for a one-year plan so we can see this is city manager's on target, that he's doing what you guys want him to do, and all of that. So I thought that was great. I haven't seen that in the past when we've done our, our RFPs. And I also liked that their, their fee included them coming down here twice, and they would stay for one to three days. And I thought that's important, everybody wants to do everything virtual now. Some of them literally had no onsite visits planned at all. Everything was virtual, so those are the things that I liked about them.
Right, and I might add that it wasn't just Donna. We had four people on staff to review, and then we all sat down and ranked everybody and gave these bullet points on why. And pretty much unanimous is the order as it came here. SGM, Columbia, and Government Professionals Solutions.
I, I think, and looking at them over, it does seem that they're, they're vested in learning what we are about here, so. I, I agree with that estimation, and thank you for your recommendation. I have no further questions.
Mr. Thurman, do you have?
I appreciate you guys do, do jolinks to get woodland down to, what, three, three, three head honors? And I appreciate you coming, coming through that. You guys listen.
You're welcome. Mr. Trigell?
Oh, and just for clarification, so it just was for my own, my, so we went through the bids and the pricing. It's for a combination of two on some of them?
Yes.
So, but are we separating those out?
So, so when I came on board, it was like that we hadn't done anything that I knew of for the chief, and so it was like, well, we're looking, so let's ask if we have a head to under for a police chief as well. We reviewed those, that is a staff hire. So I, we, we had a different group of people review those RFPs, and I'm still trying to decide whether, if funding is there, whether we use a firm or not, and, and interestingly enough, a lot, all three of these firms also put in for the police chief as well. So there may be an opportunity for economy escape, and depending on what council decides, I may see if there's some negotiation to kind of help us with both searches, but.
To bundle, okay. It's been my word, so. And I also kind of went through their return policy, which was great. So I don't know if anybody paid attention to that, but yeah. That return policy was kind of awesome on there. One of them gave us 18 months, one gave us 12 months. But, and this one with the top one that I noticed, and I really liked, it was, the speed seemed smaller in case something did go wrong and they decided to leave. So I really, I don't know if we're saying where we want to be yet.
Yeah, go for it.
Oh, sure, I like number one.
Door number one.
Door number one for me.
Okay. Mr. Shu?
I'd go with Donna's recommendation, and she did a good survey, did that ready, so.
Donna, did this encompass a regional as well as a national?
Regional, we were doing Colorado and regionals, what was in the RFP.
Correct.
A lot of them came back and said that they have a national in their RFPs, but our RFP specifically called out.
Regional.
Yeah.
I looked at their websites too. That was really interesting. The Strategic Government Resources, it's pretty impressive who they have on their staff. And that impressed me, but I, I came to the same conclusion that Steph did on number one, I like Strategic Government Resources. I think for lack of better wording, you give more bang for your buck with them.
Right.
And I, you know, that, I think that one bullet point that says they'll assist us in advanced exercise for the final after our last go-round, I think that's very important. That's really important, I, I believe, so. Okay, Donna, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Number one?
Okay.
We're missing a council member, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Let's take a, a hiatus in town. Mr. Thurman comes back.
The quicker you get the score, the quicker.
Calm down. Three seconds.
You're going to give us a complex up here, Mr. Thurman. Do, do Jeopardy, do you?
Yeah, maybe we ought to postpone this election so I could just say, just kidding, kidding, sorry.
We're waiting for you.
Oh, that sucks, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, where was I? Did we have a motion?
No, you were asking for a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, call the vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Gregel?
Yes. Item 9, Get approval of resolution authorizing the renewal of health insurance benefits for city employees and their dependents through CEBT healthcare for Plan Year January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025.
Good evening, so as you heard previously from petitions and communications, the recommendation to council is that we remove PPO 5. We have PPO 6, 7, and 8. PPO 5 that we've had for a bit now has a $2,500 deductible and a max out-of-pocket of $4,500, $5,000 deductible for family, max out-of-pocket $9,000. PPO 6 has a $3,000 deductible, $5,000 max out-of-pocket, $6,000 family, $10,000 max out-of-pocket family. And PPO 7 has a $4,000 deductible, $8,000 family deductible, $5,000 max out-of-pocket, $10,000 max out-of-pocket. So PPO 6 and 7 both have max out-of-pocket of 5,000 to 10,000. PPO 8, which would replace, I guess it would cause probably a trickle-down effect, but PPO 8 has a $5,000 deductible, $10,000 family, and that is the max out-of-pocket on that plan. So the city has, again, PPO 5 currently, 6, and 7, $2,500, $3,000, $4,000 deductibles. Our renewal came back with an eight and a half percent increase. The cost of that eight and a half percent increase based on the current census would result in the city paying another an additional $141,000 in 2025 as compared to 2024. In 2024, the city is expected to pay $1.665 million. That's just the city portion of those premium costs.
What was that portion you said?
1.665 million. If we renew straight across, keeping PPO 5, 6, and 7, that increase, the total renewal is 1.806 million. Again, it would increase our cost by $141,581, the city Trinidad's cost. It likewise increases the employee premium cost. Employee premiums. Find my sheet. Employee premiums. So employee only would see an increase of $171.36 per year, so just under $200 per year. So that cuts into the $500 deductible increase, if you look at it dollars and cents. Employee spouse would see $357.84 additionally in premium cost, again, heading into the $500 difference. So really and truly, they're not, they're seeing a hard cost.
Department that actually told us how, what their decision was or what their recommendation was. We didn't hear from anybody else with that total recommendation. They wanted the city to take this out to do a citywide vote. And quite frankly, I don't think that's the practical approach. We did a citywide vote when we changed to C E B T and when we initially started this whole process, at one point they wanted us to go out to bid. And we're barely surpassed, we have barely surpassed where we were with respect to premium costs from 2019. That's how well C E B T has been for the city. Now, I don't like putting the city council in a position of having to make this difficult decision because, you know, you've heard from unions and they feel demoralized by this. They shouldn't feel demoralized, I'm sorry, they shouldn't. One of the things that I pointed out to them is that they have very good equipment, they have good jobs, they have good benefits. We're asking for a little bit of a concession here. We're not, we're not taking anything away from them that is necessarily meaningful. At the most, we're inflating a cost to them on premium, I'm sorry, deductible and max out of pocket if they get there. Twelve so far this year. So, there's the gamble with insurance. And again, I apologize for having council in this position. I'm going to stay in, I'll take the heat for it. I stick with this recommendation. It's the most responsible thing to do with respect to the city's finances going into a very thin year in 2025. So, any questions?
Audrey, with the budget restraints, it would benefit the city by dropping P P O five, you're saying, right?
Correct.
So, if I did my addition right, I think approximately ninety city employees that benefit from P P O five right now. So, the commonalities between P P O five, six, and seven, eight, there's not really that much of a difference.
Not that much of a difference.
So, they would still benefit from adopting the six, seven, and eight. We don't.
There's still really great plans. The difference, primary difference is that deductible and max out of pocket, five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Well, it's just a tough decision, like I said.
I understand.
And like, you know, we have to do exactly what you're saying, that we have to do what's right for the city. I mean, we don't have the money, so we don't want to cut any jobs off either.
Well, and that's the hope, that we don't have to take more drastic measures down the road because we don't make the right choices now. One of the comments was that we've mismatched the budget. So, hard pill to swallow when you're trying to really do what's best for the city.
And we do.
So.
Mr. Trillo.
I have a lot of questions.
Okay.
So, going back to, let's just start off first, when did we first find out that we needed to talk about this? Like, how long ago was this that we knew that it's coming to us now?
The health insurance?
Yeah, because we only have eleven days to figure this out and get it through, right?
So, we got it approximately, I would say mid-September, we got our renewal.
Okay. And so, that's when that was discussed, right? So, I'm just curious, because the way that these numbers just came out, the way that it just unfolded, it feels like we should have had a work session on this. We should have been a little bit more informed to be able to ponder on it just a little bit, and that's just my concern. Being that there was a lot of information just thrown at us for a very quick decision.
So, yeah.
And I understand why. You know, so, because we're at a deadline now, so we are in a corner. That is my concern on that. It's hard for me to process, to make a decision that quickly on somebody's health insurance when it took me two months on mine. Because I had to sit there and decide what could I afford, what could I budget, what could I do, you know, and let alone for me to make a decision on, what did we just say, ninety, ninety-six employees?
Uh huh.
To do that immediately. And that's concerning to me. But I worry because we are in a tight budget, but I also worry because our people are unhappy. So, it's kind of a tough predicament. So, it's going to take me a while to figure out where I would want to sit on this, I'll be honest.
I respect that. Name.
Seems like the budget is tight, but I don't think it is. I think it's, it's kind of close as far as deductible and out of pocket. It's not that really, what are we talking about, five hundred bucks?
Uh huh.
Yeah. It's tough, but I want the city to, like, we're going into a, a rough time with funds, so. I think that if the employees, the fire department and the other departments kind of roll with us on the six, seven, as far as that, and not do number five, I think we should, we should roll with the city and buckle down because we don't know what the future is looking like with funds. Does that make any sense?
Um.
Joining city council will be fun, they said. That's what I was told. You know, obviously, you know, people say we live in a democratic society, and that's not true, because a purely democratic society is going to fail miserably. I mean, we'll all vote to pay ourselves four thousand dollars a day up here, and the staff will vote to pay themselves a lot more per hour, and in about four minutes, the city will be bankrupt and failed consequently. We're responsible for exercising financial responsibility, and that, that leads to us being in the hot seat, right? And ultimately, I mean, there isn't really a good decision, because if we decide to go ahead, it's, it's been made clear that the ponderance of the city employees are opposed to this, and yet, on the other side, it's the fiscally responsible thing to do. So, if we vote no, then we potentially have the remainder of the ten thousand citizens potentially upset. That being said, it, it doesn't feel like there's a good path forward. Audrey, I did have a question, and I have to be honest. I, I'm not great at writing down numbers and following along there, to be perfectly honest. I would have, and this is just an observation, I think it'd been helpful if we could have seen like a graphical representation, and I know this is quickly developing, so this is inherently a criticism. But it's, it's my understanding that the maximum that we're looking at, as I was trying to figure through that, the maximum hard costs that we're looking at, absolute, for sure going to happen, costs, is in the neighborhood of somewhere under fifty dollars a month. Is, is that right or wrong, am I looking at?
The employee or?
Yeah, the employees.
The employee. Employee only, yes.
Okay, and then?
Families, family increase would be a hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-seven cents.
A month?
Uh huh.
Okay.
That would be what they would increase to stay on P P O five.
A month, you said?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm telling you the wrong number, forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Oh.
That goes back to the five-eleven forty-four.
Okay, so.
Employee, or, would pay a hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-seven cents per month more per family.
So, then, I think I asked, the hard cost for employer, I'm sorry, employee per month is, is under fifty dollars a month, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And another observation is, I mean, this, the city isn't saving money on this, it's that our, our cost, our increase, is actually just being lessened by this, so it's a, it's a shared burden. To, I guess, a question I had, in any iteration of the new P P Os, is any single employee's hard cost per month going to be exceeding fifty dollars per month?
No.
No, okay.
No.
So, this whole discussion is centered around hard costs of less than fifty a month, and ultimate, if someone maxes out in a year, a difference of one thousand?
Five hundred.
Oh, five hundred, okay. It's been a long day with a lot of numbers at my job, so. You know, I think, well, Mayor, I'm going to have, I'll be done for now, but I might request a question after.
You done for now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
So, let me ask you a question, Audrey. Most people, the biggest majority of their medical costs are doctor's visits and prescriptions.
Correct.
So, how, what do, what do all these plans cover for doctor's visits, and is that included in their deductible?
No, no. They have copays for office visits, and it's, it depends on the prescription, what level it's covered at.
But they have, do they have dental and?
Dental and vision are voluntary.
Okay.
And they're actually seeing a ten percent decrease on those premiums.
Okay, all right. So, on their office visits, give me an idea of what their, what their copay is.
It's currently fifty, it'll go to fifty-five.
Fifty-five. And that's regard, irregardless of what, what the P P O option is that they, okay. So, if anybody understands what kind of situation we're in, it's me, because I live it every day, eight hours a day, and then some. I think part of the reason that these people came tonight is, most people, most consumers do not understand insurance, not let alone health insurance. So, you really have to sit there and drill down on these figures. And somebody said it tonight, insurance is a gamble. I mean, you know, you've got to kind of figure out, well, my, what's my health, and what are my, what's the probability of me, you know, but that's, that's, you might as well look in a crystal ball for them.
Correct.
So, I have, I think I have a, a middle-of-the-road solution to this. Is it possible, would it put a string on staff? If you gave us these figures written out, sent them to us ahead of time, and then at the end of our work session on Monday, then we have a vote on this?
No, that's fine. I have all of the numbers. Typically, what we've, what we've done is exactly what we've done this evening, is given you these, and it's not generally been so contentious. I'll just remind again, twenty nineteen, we had deductibles that were three thousand dollars, and the max out of pocket was a lot more, it was sixteen hundred dollars more than what any of these plans have right now. So, but no, I'm happy to do that.
Is that, will that put a pin on us?
No.
And then that way we can, but please, I caution council to look at these and study them now that we have time, so you'll be prepared when we come Monday to make a decision. You know, I think that's, that's the best we can do, because when I have that many employees come before me, I've got to give them the benefit of the doubt. It's a, it's, it's a thin line that we're walking here, and I don't want to install it, insult staff, people that make these decisions either. So, I think maybe that's the better thing to do. But in addition, you know, I, people that are not in the private sector do not understand these costs, and, and how hard it is for an employer, whether you be a municipality or you be an individual, you know, with, and I'm sorry if I'm pontificating on this, but, you know, in, in for-profit businesses, it's a matter of success or failure. If you don't make the right decisions regarding your expenses, you might not be there next year. With a municipality, somebody else said it. It's not the fact that we won't, we will be here, but at what, at what extent will we be hindered by the decision that we make? We can't keep going back to reserves for increased costs like this. I mean, it makes absolutely no sense to do that, because we could probably say, okay, this year we'll dip into some reserve somewhere, like the marijuana, the rainy date fund. That's not what that fund is for, that's for a genuine emergency. And that just rolls the ball down the hill another year, because next year, we're going to be in the same situation, probably worse, you know. But the amount, you know, when you say that the world is conti, the talks were contentious, that's the world.
Absolutely. Everyone's hurting for money, and so.
Absolutely, yeah.
It shows in those conversations, but you know, it's not, it was unnecessary.
Understood.
And so.
There's a lot of stuff that goes before us that's unnecessary.
I would interject that it is not us against them.
No, it's never.
It is not them against the workers. It is the entire city that will take the hit for this and will try to do what's expensible.
You will say, Cheryl, all of you that work for the city are going to bear these, these costs. You're taking money out of your own pockets.
Right. And we choose a plan as well.
Right.
We have nothing more than what our union coworkers have, we get, we don't have, it's the same, we're all in the same situation. But at the same time, we're in these roles to make sure that.
Absolutely.
We're suggesting to council the best course of action. And I'm going to stand by my suggestion on this.
Understood, and I, it's just like.
I'm happy to be the bad guy, I.
No, no.
It's dollars and cents, and it's not.
Right.
It's what, it's what we have to do. I mean, us seven, six here took an oath to do what was right for this community, and our employees are part of the community, and I think just to give them the benefit of the doubt that we did our due diligence, and not make a decision within a half hour. Really study and figure out so we can, we can be satisfied that we did the best we could for the employees and the city of Trinidad, I think that's the best thing.
So, we can postpone, I'm sorry.
I wanted to ask a follow-up question, if I may.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Audrey, you mentioned that dental and vision were elective coverages?
Correct.
And their, their copay went down by ten, I'm sorry, their coverage went down by ten percent?
Their premiums?
Premium, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And you may not have this number, and if you don't, is it possible to provide it? What percentage of people that have our insurance have those two, if, if that's possible to get it? I think that would be interesting to see. The other point that you brought up, and I, I think it's worth looking at, again, if it's not too much to request, you mentioned that coverages, and if I misunderstood this, sorry, were down appreciably from, I'm sorry, expense to the employee, were down since, when you look back to two thousand and eighteen, did I misunderstand that?
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, twenty nineteen.
If you look at the council communication, you'll see that history.
Okay.
But yes, I can get hard numbers for you if you'd like.
Yeah, all right.
Um, at this point, we're, we've surpassed premium cost by now.
Okay.
But we're talking a number of years too.
Correct. I, if you can just include that in that chart, if it's, if it's not too much. And I just wanted to say, I think if you ask anybody, I would hope that no one's going to label you as being the bad guy, I think you're, you're being fiscally responsible, and I think it's important to note that you are living under the same umbrella that you're offering to everybody else. So, that's, it's admirable, and your job and our job. And one other thing I would say, in, in the private sector, these changes are no less contentious, but more often than not, there isn't the avenue to voice that. So, we all, you know, this is a privileged position we're in. So, I did want to say, Mayor, thank you for this idea of postponing until Monday, and I will most certainly review that information.
We owe it to employees and citizens alike.
You were also handed a packet of the preliminary budget. As you look through these numbers, please recognize what's going on with that budget. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not pretty, that's all I'm going to say, so.
I have my question, mine's technical. So, like, I just need help with homework. So, just for clarification, if we have, yeah, I'm coming over if we can, and.
No.
I bring great skills. So, what I'm curious with is, okay, so just for clarification, since I don't do this, does it cost us to offer each one of these? Is that where, is that where we're at?
We, the city of Trinidad pays seventy-nine percent of every single plan, regardless of what plan is chosen by the employee.
So, by having four, that's what costs us more?
No. By having P P O five, keeping P P O five.
Four options, is what I'm saying.
No.
Oh, no, we only will have three options.
Okay, so, but we're having four options, it costs us?
No.
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 I will outline it better.
Please, thank you.
Yes, and if you want, call me tomorrow, and I'll review it with you more, I can.
Please.
I will also try to get it into a council packet more sooner than later, so that you have ample time to look at it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, we have a.
I, I'd make a motion.
Recend, rescind your motion, correct?
We don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion, I was going to, I was going to make a motion to move approval of a resolution authorizing the renewal of health insurance benefits for the city employees and their dependents through C E B T healthcare for plan year January one, two thousand and twenty-five, to December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, to our next work session, the Monday coming up.
Sarah's second. Can you call the vote, please?
Devono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item nine G, first reading of ordinance establishing and implementing a program to charge mitigation rates for the development of emergency and non-emergency services by the Trinidad Fire Department for services rendered by the department, and setting a hearing date at six P M. on November sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, for consideration of said ordinance. I need someone to introduce.
I'll introduce.
All right. The most patient man in the room.
Eric, council members, how are you this evening? Fire head?
We're great.
So, we kind of talked about this at the work session. Do you guys have any questions? I think we gave you a pretty good packet on what we're trying to do.
Any questions, Mr.?
No, everything was pretty self-conscious.
Mister's to the right, mister's to the left.
I think, I think anything we can do to mitigate declining revenue and help bolster cities' money in is something we need to do, so, yeah.
Just, I don't have a question, Chief, but just for clarification, give us an example of what, the scenario that, what you would.
So, we'll, we'll bill for car fires, semi-fires, anything like that, if it requires extrication, we'll, we'll bill for that extrication. We'll bill for our high angle rescue stuff if, if we need to. All of our hazmat, which by federal levels, we have to bill for, we'll bill for illegal fires. So, if somebody starts an illegal fire, because we don't allow burns in our city, we don't, we don't issue burn permits, we will charge for that, especially if it gets away. We will not, and I, and I need to clarify, we're not going to bill for structured fires, commercial or residential. That's kind of our job, and that's what you pay us to do. It's just we're trying to recoup some of this money where this equipment is pretty expensive. Another thing we do not bill for is EMS calls, and that's about sixty-three percent of our business is EMS calls.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
And one thing I think is important to note, unless I'm wrong, I mean, many of these fees that we're talking about are covered by some type of insurance.
Correct.
Anyway, with the exception of illegal, and I think, you know.
If you have those sudden fires, you probably need to pay something anyway, right?
But I mean, so, it's, it's not, we are not voting on a fee that's going to encumber city residents, I mean, this.
Correct. And you have to have car insurance, and car insurance reimburses fire departments. This company that we chose has over eighteen hundred customers across the nation, so they're well versed in collecting revenue for fire departments, that's what they do.
Man.
Yes.
Yes.
And just for clarification, we're not, we have in charge for these in the past at all, right? We've been missing out on this.
No, so, the only thing that we've charged for, since I've been on this department twenty-seven years, is hazmat, because we're federally required to do that. And then, we started a wild land program a few years ago, where we go out of the county, and we go across the nation, and we charge for our services there, and we get reimbursed for that. And you'll be seeing a big reimbursement coming in, because my guys were graciously enough to spend a month in California, and so, we will see a big paycheck from that.
Good.
Anything else?
No, sir. Just to kind of remind everybody, how many fire trucks have we bought through the marijuana money tree?
Actually, you have bought four, plus the chief's truck.
Right.
I know Chief Power got our big ladder truck, Chief Prey got one of our engines. You guys voted a couple of years ago to buy two new ones when I first got this job, we're still waiting on the second one to come in. So, you've bought a lot of equipment with the marijuana money. I wouldn't be able to do what I do without that marijuana money, I'll tell you. So, and seeing that's declined.
Right.
We need to find another way to keep moving forward.
That's why.
Because we got to deliver the services.
That's why I brought it up, because we won't have that.
Right.
That money going forward, so.
And I don't think people want services taken away, I think they're requesting more services at this point.
All right. Thank you. Any other question? Okay, I did, we did the motion and said.
Thank you, Chief.
So, vote.
It was Councilman Williamson and.
It was three of us.
I introduced, I, I did.
Okay, I'm sorry, it was.
Many.
Okay, so, Councilman Trillo.
Yes.
Is that who's by Councilman Shu?
Yes.
Can we say that?
Yes.
Okay.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item ten, reports by city manager and city attorney.
Hope it's a long one.
Yeah, don't you know.
Mine is very short, all I'm asking is that our Monday work session start at two. We've got five items already on the agenda that are pretty extensive, and now we've added a special meeting, so if we could start at two o'clock with council's permission. Everybody shaking.
Yeah, rattling heads. Sorry. The. I think you're in trouble with Councilman Shu, but.
I'm fine.
Councilman, Councilwoman Ogle Tree won't be here, because she's doing a medical procedure on Monday.
Okay.
But everybody seemed to be nodding in the affirmative.
Right.
The record shifts so reflect.
Just, from the mayor, just be here.
Nice.
Don't, don't ask, just tell him.
It's good, there's, there's a lot on the agenda, and it's, it's an all part of.
Yes, sir.
The whole process here that we're going through, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
May I, for two eighteen?
I think two eighteen's a very good time to start.
Take a note that Mr. Trillo's. Take a note that Mr. Trillo's delirious.
Yeah, I'm giving him the best of his least.
Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members, only one thing. And I just want to announce that by mutual agreement, I have agreed to stay on as city attorney until January first of two thousand and twenty-five, while the city continues to look for my replacement. I will continue on at my current rate of compensation and other things. But anyway, just wanted to read that announcement and add to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Downs.
Thank you, thank you.
It's very much appreciated.
My pleasure, my pleasure, thank you.
Okay, item eleven is adjournment, motion to?
So, move. Second?
Call the vote, please.
Roger.
Devono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trillo?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grago?